Hi. I'm in the car coming back from Boston right now.
Take attendance to the road.
Yeah, exactly. But I'm practically there. I can hear you all, so.
All right, well, we're just getting started, so you haven't missed anything yet.
Okay.
Okay, so let's start with attendance. Sarah Pease here.
Elaine Breslow.
Present.
Carolyn Coffey here.
Steve Brown.
Here.
Alex Vitari.
Present.
Megan Brinsey.
Here via Zoom.
And Virgil.
Here.
So we're missing Mary Lou. Right, is that all? Yeah. Yes, eight of us, right? Yes. All right, so did everybody look at the minutes?
I did.
Any comments, additions, corrections?
Looks good to me.
All right, motion approved.
I'll move to proof.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so minutes are approved, and so that's Megan.
I have a quick director's report this evening. The first thing is thanking all of you for approving the safe chat policy. It's been very timely. We've also put up some really positive message signage up in the children's room for you to take a look at on your way out this evening, just reminding caregivers of the new policy. We've had some really nice feedback. We've had one person was not happy to see the sign. But for the most part, we've had a lot of positive feedback, a lot of children wanting to read it with their caregiver. Just a nice moment to just remind everybody what our expectations are in a positive way. The mini golf event, which I'm sure we'll talk mostly about this evening, I think went extremely well. Very, very excited about it. The first event on Thursday night, we had about 40 men. And they had some beer and live music and pizza and, most importantly, mini golf. And there was an intense championship tiebreaker at the end. And from what I've gathered from Alex, which you can expand on, of course, is that the feedback was highly positive. And I think it sheds new light on how multifaceted the library can be. On Friday night, we had approximately 225 people. And I'm saying approximately because the people counters registered about 315 people. But I think we've had some, we had some people kind of in and out, too. So I can't say that, I really don't think we had 315. So we had about 225. What I felt was unique is that we had a lot of multi-generational families join. So we had the toddler and the grandparents and the parents kind of all playing together, which was something that was unique and really fun. The mom on the go food truck went very well. We hit our minimum pretty easily, which was great. People utilized that for dinner. And a lot of people said that they'd really like to have this every year, so I think it went really, really well.
Any subjective judgment of how many people were first timers in this little, in the library?
Hard to say for me. I think if Sharon Moody had been there or a more seasoned person, they would have been able to probably give me a better idea of that. But most of the faces, there was a few faces that I recognized, but most of them were new to me.
Cool.
So, yeah.
I did have a couple of dads who said to me, embarrassed to say, but this is the first time I've ever been in library. And so that was, that was cool. And, you know, like, I just wanted to echo with, I was thinking everybody was really thought it was a very cool idea. They thought, you know, they appreciated, I did get a chance to, you know, speak for a few minutes about the library and the importance of it, the community. And I think just, I think a lot of, I got a lot of positive feedback from the guys. It was a lot of fun. It was a different experience, you know. And also the fact that, you know, they just always thought of the library as being kind of a place where you, you know, it's had rule-driven, it's about books. And I think we're trying to hit home that it's more about community than anything else, and I think, so that was really positive. So anyway, they, my guys had a fun time. And, you know, I think we just now is an opportunity to kind of continue to push on on that, so.
Ask them for programming ideas.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so we can keep them coming back.
I will, actually.
Yeah. What they're reading or consuming media-wise and what, you know, maybe we could put something together based on that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, such an untapped or underserved part of the community.
Well, Megan actually mentioned, she said, she goes, I don't exactly know who it was, but, you know, because I had said, you know, I, once in my face, favorite place in town to work. And so getting out of the house and get out of your own office or, or, you know, alternate to go into the city, come here and do some work. And you mentioned the next day.
The very next day, I saw a fellow here that I was fairly sure was to hear the night before, so that was great, yeah.
I thought, what I was noticing is like, there was basically no one my age there. I mean, it was all younger people. It was great.
Yeah, that was good. Good, so mini golf went well, and we hope to do that again sometime. The next thing on my list is we are launching Cohasset Connects in April. And when I say we, it's the town of Cohasset. This is a joint venture with Community Services and DPW, actually, and the Communications Department. So what Cohasset Connects is, is an app that you will be able to download on your phone. And we're doing a soft launch with just DPW and Community Services where you can say, you can put on the app, "I see a tree down on Beechwood Street," and it'll grab the coordinates, it'll send it over to the appropriate person at DPW, and it'll print out a work order for them to complete. So, yeah, it's pretty awesome. Well, you know, it's like, we can't, you know, the town doesn't have eyes everywhere. The community does. And so this is kind of a great way to start to streamline, you know, as we talk about, you know, comments on Facebook regarding, you know, different topics in town. This is one of the things that pops up is, you know, "I see this, and how come DPW doesn't see this?" Well, this is a great way, great. You see it, document it so that they can see it, and we can all take care of it. So on the DPW side, this will be really great for them. On the Community Services side, we're launching it as more of like a frequently asked questions type thing, you know, "How can I register for Playground Camp or Playground, Summer Playground, when I'll see camp? Summer Playground, how do I get a library card? How do I get mental health resources? Who do I talk to about technology help?" So just kind of extending an additional arm out to the community to connect all of our departments with the community. So that's being soft launched in April. We hope to eventually add more and more departments and have this be a really interesting, interactive app for the, for the whole town. But we think these first two departments will be interesting because they're going to be used very differently. You know, DPW is going to be a work order, whereas Community Services is going to be informational. So we're just kind of testing to see how it works with these groups and hopefully be launching it throughout the entire, all of the departments.
And you get to the app from the town website?
You can actually, you'll be able to download it onto your phone from the App Store.
Oh.
Yeah, so it'll be its own thing. It's called Cohasset Connects. I'm working with Justin Schreer on the backend of it for months now. So again, it'll be a soft launch, but I'm hoping all of you will, you know, start to utilize it and provide any feedback of things that we can change and, you know, things like that.
When does it expire?
So it's going to be April 4th, we believe. It was going to be the first, but we didn't want everybody to think it was a joke. So I'm thinking it's going to be April 4th as our launch date, but, um, but I will keep you posted. But I'm, I know that all of you are such a good resource, and I'm hoping that you'll be able to help us with feedback.
And those, the, so if I have a question about Playground Camp or what, you can go on there and someone will respond within a certain amount of time, or is it?
So it's not a, it's not a chat feature. It's, it's, it's going to be FAQs with also somebody responding eventually. So it'll be like an email, respond in the next couple of days type of thing. So to make sure, check in, like, "Did you get the information? Do you feel good about, you know, did you get to register?" Kind of like that type of follow-up. So the automatic response will be like, "Here's the website, and, you know, here are some details about how to register." And then there'll be a follow-up in the next couple of days from a real person that'll say, you know, "Was that information helpful? Did you get yourself registered?" That type of thing. We have looked into a chat feature just for the library website. We actually looked at it during COVID. We had a chat feature when we can, and we're still just trying to figure out how to schedule it properly so that we know that there's somebody who is available to answer it. So that's something that's kind of been in the wheelhouse, but we haven't actually implemented yet. Just because we want to make sure that if we're open and we're allowing chat, that we respond, so.
For what that's, for what's worth, I'm working with a group at MGH that are trying to simplify patient gateway.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, there was an incredible overload, work overload, and all the healthcare providers, because everybody started to use it and ask all these questions, and then nobody was responding.
Yeah.
Understandably, so it's really great that you are going to step into this.
Yeah, it's time for us to, you know, people are interested in the answers right away now. Like, that's the next generation, is everybody's used to instant gratification, and we'd like to be able to provide that. Just thinking about, thinking staffing grew and.
Here is a trivial idea, but you can say, "Would you be happy, this could overload our staff, would you be happy if we got back to you within a week? Do you need to get back within three days? Or you need an answer by today?" And that way it'll help prioritize it.
Yeah, yeah, that could be something. And it could also, if we could create a way, too, when the chat comes in, that they can say, "This question is about reference." And then it goes to somebody in particular. Or this question is about renewing, "I want to renew a book." The other thing I hesitate about is specifically renewing books, because sometimes, what we found during the pandemic, is people would call and we'd laugh at them and say, "I'd like to renew the book I have. It's blue. Click." Like, you don't know who they are. You don't know what the blue book is, and, and they think that it's now been renewed. And so, you know, we became very liberal about, you know, renewals and things. So, you know, I, that's another thing, that like, we could have a chat come up from somebody and say, you know, "This is what I want," and they X it out, and then we haven't been able to respond. We don't have enough detail. So we just have to think all of those details through so that we are providing good service and not just confusing everybody instead. So. Well, no, and the good part about a message like that is that they feel as though, you know, the library's familiar enough to them that they can say, "Hey, it's me," you know. Maybe they're not, you know, that doesn't help us on our end, so. So Cohasset Connects, when that does launch, I'll send you all an email, and maybe you can take some time to, to provide us some feedback. And try it out. March 15th, next Wednesday, is Library Legislative Day. So I am going to the, back to the State House. We haven't been able to go in two or three years now, meeting some of my fellow library directors. We have an appointment with Senator O'Connor at 1:00 at his, his office. Sandra Perry from the Friends is also joining me. She has also created a really fantastic email blast that's going to go out on Friday, just encouraging people and educating people about the legislative agenda. Some of the top things we're looking at this year are freedom from censorship, digital quality through, throughout networks. So a lot of networks in Western Massachusetts still don't have Wi-Fi or portable Wi-Fi. Yeah, so access for all, cybersecurity, and unfair ebook pricing and practices, which we all know has been going on for a couple of years now. And the entire document can be found on my director's report. There's a link. And it's also going to be sent out on Friday with the same, same information. And just some fun upcoming events and programs. We have our March Madness Pizza. I don't know if I mentioned that we're doing tech drop-ins now at 60 Young Street, so that's once a month. So 60 Young Street is the Affordable Housing Building. So they have a really cool kind of community room in the, in the basement. So we've been going over with Elder Affairs, so Elder Affairs goes over once a week as well, oh, once a month as well. So we've partnered with Elder Affairs, and we're going over together for tech help and any help that Elder Affairs can provide. We have an author talk coming up with Jackie Dormitz, are the first peoples of Cohasset. We have Teen Paint Night. We have Online Craft or Dark. We have a seed swap. We have our gaming economics with Mind Craft. And then other upcoming projects. We're still working on the website. Still working on our 10-year capital plan, Pavilion Fundraising, which I'm sure we'll talk about in a little bit. And we've started noodling around a little bit with the CLT about possibly doing a touch-a-truck event for maybe our next fundraiser for.
Oh, what's that?
Touch-a-truck. Have you heard of this before? No. So this is an awesome.
What's that?
What?
You'll find out.
Oh, so.
Oh, I said, "What's that?"
Touch-a-truck, fun event for usually like younger kids, where you have the fire department has a fire truck, the DPW drops off their bulldozers and their, and the police department, you know, will donate a truck for the day. A lot of local businesses will donate their truck for the day, too, because it gets their name out. And basically, the kids can crime, climb all over the different cars and beat the horn and turn the alarms on and, and do the whole thing. And it's just, it's really fun, really fun event, and fairly free, so. That could be the next kind of fun fundraiser for us. And that's it for me.
Questions?
We haven't started. That's like next on the docket, maybe.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder if there's any way of tying into some of our inventory of books.
Mike Mulligan?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, that is really good. We get Sharon involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, good one.
Yeah.
All right, if there's something else, then that goes to Bronwyn.
I will be very quick because there's nothing that interesting in the bills this month. Mostly materials. We had a lot of renewals of our newspapers. The Down Jones is the Wall Street Journal online version, which is about twice as expensive as the paper version, which we also get. So it's, it's expensive, but I do believe it's, it's used pretty regularly. Other than that, I don't think there's much that you wouldn't know what it was by just reading what it says. We're trying. Absolutely.
So the Wall Street Journal, for example, we get as a paper version and also patrons have access to it online. Are, are you saying you're being charged twice for that?
Yes, it's two separate, because the Wall Street Journal online, people can access from home.
Right.
And they, but they have to, it's set up in a way that you have to put in your library card account. So it's not like if I had a subscription to the Globe, I would also get online access. But I couldn't let everyone I knew use it. So that's, it's, it's a subscription essentially for the whole town or for anyone who has a library card. So that's why it's a lot more expensive.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. And the New York Times, same thing, right? We pay that a little differently, but same idea. You can use the New York Times, yeah, yeah. So as it gets more and more expensive to get the paper version, I think people are dropping it and then using our, our subscriptions. Yeah, although people still do come in.
They come in for the paper.
Yeah, there's a whole group of, it's all men. I hate to say this, but.
They come in because they like buying a book.
Well, that's true.
But it's not what I mean. I guess my comment is just regarding the cost of the newspaper. It's, it's so expensive. And to host both is like, is a lot of money for the same content. But I'm glad that people come in and it made it that way.
Same content, different experiences.
Are these men older than me?
Not necessarily. It's definitely retirees, because it's in the morning, for the most part, that they come in.
Yeah.
But there's definitely a group.
And do they use other resources?
I don't see them checking out books, but I don't, I'm not on the desk at all, so I don't know.
Kind of social thing, too. Good reason for them to come in.
Yes, they all hang in the periodicals room. They read all, they don't just read one newspaper. They work their way through everything.
And there's kind of like a, you know.
Yeah.
All the, yeah.
Do they get impromptu discussions about issues or?
That I don't know.
Is there any way that, I'm still on my, being my bonnet, trying to bridge the gaps between right and left?
Yeah.
And can I digress on that for just a minute?
Yeah.
So four women that I know are all therapists. Two of them are very conservative and two are very liberal. And they suddenly said, "Oh, my God, we should be able to discuss all of this without any problems." Not so. So they worked at it, and they ultimately came up with the conclusion that everybody's fears are different. And the fears were driving the positions. So I've been talking with a couple of folks that know a hell of a lot more about this than I do. But one of the ideas that came up was, what if instead of calling it fears, if you just said, "What are your worries? What are your worries globally, nationally, community-wise, family-wise, and for yourself?" And to the extent, the hypothesis is, to the extent that you broaden your worries, that you start to understand the other person's position. Not that it's going to change your views.
Right.
But you can say, "Yeah, if you're worried about, you've got a house in the shore, you're worried about sea level rise." Whatever it is. So long story short, it'd be kind of fun to take advantage of this existing group and try things like this out without having any fistfights.
Would they would be, would they be interested in, we're also, I met with the leaders of faith in town last month, just to talk a little bit about.
That was great.
Just this, really.
Dan mentioned that.
Yeah, it was really fun and just something that I hadn't done before. So we're talking about maybe in the fall, doing a series that they're kind, they're doing in Situate already, where you prompt conversation with a piece of literature or a piece of art. And so, you know, just talking about maybe, you know, difficult topics with using literature to kind of move forward with the topic and having somebody mediate the conversation and things like that. But I'm wondering if this group of women might be interested in helping mediate through, because that's kind of our big jump right now is figuring out who we could get to kind of mediate these conversations. Would it be somebody who lives in town? Would it be somebody who doesn't live in town? That type of thing. And who just has those talents. It's a, it's a hard thing to do, so.
Yeah, identify a couple of folks that would, could be able to do that.
Okay, yeah.
I know a whole bunch of mediators.
Do you? Oh, well, that would make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe help you with that. Yeah, great, okay. When it gets a little closer, I'll touch base with Bronwyn.
Yeah, right. So, sorry, just because I'm stuck on it, I won't, I won't, I won't recover, and I won't pay attention if I don't actually ask this question. So the hypothesis is that if you speak in terms of worry as opposed to speaking in terms of beliefs, if you speak in terms of worries, you will, you will increase empathy and be able to have a more, have a conversation that's more productive.
Right, because it's easier, it's harder to identify with someone's fears. Yeah, that's the hypothesis. But if, if someone says, "Well, I'm worried about my car breaking out," or something like that, I don't know, what, what do people think? If someone talks to you about a worry they have, how do you respond?
With compassion.
I think, I was gonna say, I think that, that's right. I, I think when people are talking about their, like, their anger, what they're angry about, it makes everyone else feel automatically defensive. But when you get to the root of it, it really is their, their worry, right? And that makes them seem vulnerable, and then the other person then is empathetic. I think it's a great way to go at it.
So why don't we just put that in, in, in our head someplace and then look for a natural opportunity to try it out? Yeah?
That's everything for Bronwyn, okay.
So they just have to be. Our, our, we only have $6,700 left for the next three months. And so I was just wondering how you felt about getting through the next three months.
We just talked about some of that conversation.
So we feel fine. Most of our expenses coming up are materials. And.
Which doesn't count in.
Which doesn't count into that. And I think we've talked about, I think our largest expense is our newsletter is coming up. That's going to be the biggest one, and that's trending up. And Bronwyn started to do some research on how to save a little bit of money there. I don't know if we're willing to say, yeah, we have, we have a, I've reached out to a couple of different groups. And actually, I got a good lead from Town Hall, because I called over there to say, "Well, what do you, who do you use for your, for the warrant? The town meetings and the annual report?" And they gave me a name, and then they also gave me another, I don't know, you want to tell them?
So I guess the South Shore Votec has a state-of-the-art print shop. And they're telling me that they, you basically pay for the paper and they do the work. So I don't, I haven't really gotten any further than that. And I also reached out to this other, the person that they, so at Town Hall, they haven't gone that route yet because they're a little worried about, you know, the annual town meeting warrant just being printed completely incorrectly. So they're going to try it on smaller jobs first and then see how it goes. So we had talked about maybe doing something like that.
Where is the Votec?
It's in Hanover, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's in Hanover, so.
That's a win-win.
Yeah, I checked the sheriffs.
Like using the prison for the upholstery.
Yeah, so I, I don't know where that's going to go. In the meantime, I also connected with a couple of other commercial printers in the area to get their pricing, to see if there's some way we can, and that everyone seems to be so happy to get the newsletter. And I think it really has brought in more people from the community. So I, I think it's a great thing to do, but the price has gone up, and maybe that's just a function of inflation and paper.
Everything's done up.
All of that, so.
It's just done up quite a bit. But we don't really have any expenses moving forward and.
There'll be one more newsletter, though, right?
There'll be one more newsletter.
That'll be another $2,500 bucks or whatever, right?
So that's, that we thought, well, if we could, if we could figure out some way to, you know, pare that cost down, then that would give us a little more breathing room for other things that might come up that, you know, we don't plan for. But I think we'll be fine.
Yeah, we also think, we're also fairly sure that we have money in the personnel line that's going to be left, as we do every year.
And that counts in as well.
And that will count into the bottom line as well, so we'll be all right. But there's definitely some cost of things that we normally get that just went way up this year that we really couldn't control.
Too about, you know, don't print things unless you really need to.
Right.
You know, just don't, we've been, you know, trying to buy less expensive paper for the coloring pages that Sharon gives out, which people really, really want, but at the same time, they don't need to be, they don't need to be on high quality, you know.
Right, just, you know, the stickers for the spine labels, book tape, all of these things.
I mean, just, yeah, everything's gotten more expensive, but.
Did we build, excuse me, all that into the budget for next year, the fact that they're going up? Because we, we looked at level funding.
Well, I mean, but we're trying to level fine so that we can catch up with, so we can catch up with our materials.
But I think, like, we're trying to. We, I think we added 1,000 more to the supplies.
Right.
Took it off of something else that we weren't using.
Petty cash, I thought. Yeah, we moved things around, but we did level fun. We did ask for 20,000 more in the materials budget. So we're just going to have to be a little tighter about things like, you know, looking at the pricing of specifically the, the newsletter is a big cost to us. You know, just reevaluating some of the pricing. Is a big cost to us, you know, just reevaluating some of the pricing of the things that we do because. Um, we just have to change operations a little bit because we're trying to catch up to our, you know, with the materials. We can't keep asking for more money for supplies if we turn it out, so we're just gonna, you know. In the desperate state.
Could we go to Lowe's, uh, Lowe's or sorry, uh.
Staples.
Thank you, Staples, and say, would you like to get a little more publicity? In Cohasset, uh, we need more supplies and we, we could put a little sign there, you know.
Yeah.
Lowe's is great, things like that.
Yeah, we could start thinking about things like that. I don't know how much WB Mason. I don't know how much WB Mason would like that, but, um.
Actually, that's a great idea.
I mean, that's, that goes back to the conversation, like if, if you ever think about driving some sort of a. Business center kind of experience like that, he should fund that or sponsor that. Create some sort of, yeah, there's definitely some.
Anybody know him?
Yeah.
Uh, beautiful.
Library newspaper.
Tell me what the ask is and I'll ask and I'm.
Can you make it, just make a list of what you need supply wise and? Nothing ventured.
Yeah, we could ask.
Certainly paper for coloring pages, what could that be, a box of paper?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is this WB Mason stuff?
So my, my thought on this is we can make this a small ask or we can make this a big ask, right?
They've, they've already been asked to contribute to the civilian project, so I have a big ask in with them. That is being considered, so we might want to just.
That's, that sounds. That sounds about right, so I, I just, I, I don't, I, I, I'm one hundred and zero, hundred percent, I think that's where the. So.
Well, you know, we, we do a lot of shopping around a number of different vendors and it, it's amazing the difference from. Staples, WB Mason to Amazon, you know, everything you have to check all different vendors and.
Wonderful, thank you for doing it.
The more money we have, the more things we can do, so that's, it's, it's worth it, but, um. Well, I think we'll be fine.
The more things we can do.
Well, we're lucky at this point now, facilities really puts the bill for anything that's a building emergency, building at all. Like all, all of our toilets, you've just got replaced, we didn't pay for any of that, so. But I guess my point is we don't have to pay for any ongoing maintenance, so we don't really have any surprise bills.
Can I make a motion to approve? I'd like to send it.
So moved.
Alright, so, uh, we'll just do a quick roll call. Sarah Peace. Elaine Russell, aye. Carolyn Coffey, aye. Alex Beteri, uh, Megan Brinsey.
Aye.
Brooke Joel.
Aye.
And Catherine Harvey, aye, so bills pass, so, um, alright, so for me, well, that was a good segue. Because my first thing I wanted to say is newsletter was fantastic and thank you for putting the new rendering on the cover. Because I think that was like a fantastic use of the newsletter and fantastic use of the new rendering. And I think, I, I hope that it really brought home the idea to pretty much everybody in town. So, and I think, um, we had it before Friday night, right? I think we did. It was in our mailboxes before Friday, yeah, it came last week, right? Yeah. So one of the things I wanted to say about, about, um, the mini golf on Friday night is that I was surprised by the number of people who came in. Because Barbara and I were seated at the table taking the donations. And, um, so we're sort of greeting people as they were coming in. And so most of the people to whom I said something about, you know, this is ultimate for the pavilion, said, oh, I know, it's great. And I was surprised and really gratified by how many people were already familiar with the project. So I, of course, encouraged everyone to continue to spread the word and let everybody, they know, um, know about, about the project. So, and it was, it was a great time and I made the same observation about how many families there were with the grandparents, parents and, and kids too. And, um, yeah, it was, it was great. I think a lot of people really enjoyed it, but there were also just some stray adults, you know, in pairs. And coming into play, you know, not as many obviously, but there were some.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, so it was a great time. Um, so the other thing I wanted to, um, talk about was, uh, thank you to everyone who contributed to the flowers. Uh, for, uh, for the O'Callaghan family after, um, uh, the recent passing of Cal Callahan. So we, um, collected about five hundred and fifty dollars. So, yeah, so about a hundred and fifty went to flowers and then we made a four hundred dollar contribution to the Sandy Beach Association and his memory. And, um, there's no, I did it on the website, there was not a mechanism to. Like, like for the acknowledgement, so I sent Catherine a separate note via email, just letting her know that that was on behalf of, of the, you know. Friends and.
I missed that, can I make a contribution later?
Well, I already did it, but it was, it was in the name of trustees, friends and CLT board members, so, you know.
There was no asterisk on my name.
Not at all, and, you know, so it was, you know, all, all in the spirit of, uh. So, so we, we, we got you, Steve. Um, okay, so I was going to do a reminder about pulling papers, but that's obviously not necessary. Um, oh, so the thing that I was going to say about the meeting is that, um, Elaine forwarded to me, Elaine, this morning. And I had seen this, I had a midlog yesterday, uh, about this recent SJC opinion about public comment in open meetings. I don't know if anybody else has seen this, but the upshot of it is that the SJC ruled, I believe, yesterday that, um. I mean, it, not a surprise because you, you, you can't restrict anyone's First Amendment rights. Unless it's as a public actor to restrict the time, place or manner, like that's the, the legal test. And so the case involved, um, a public comment at an open meeting in South Borough, so, right? Yeah, one of those towns, I don't know, yeah. And, um, they had a policy, and I think it was a select board meeting, but the select board had a policy. That basically said you can't use any rude language, you can't use any, say anything slanderous, which, I mean slander is accepted anyway, but. Neither here nor there, they have these rules and someone, and they also apparently had a. Unfortunate habit of consistently violating the open meeting laws. And so someone came to their meeting to say like, hey, could you stop violating the open meeting law? And a discussion not so, um, fragile ensued and yada, yada, yada. She ended up suing, uh, the select board and individual, the, the board member who she had the dispute with or had the conversation with. So all to say, um. Anybody who wants to come to our meetings can come to our meetings and they can say whatever they want and we should all be aware of that. So, I, again, I, I don't think it's a pressing issue, um, and, uh. You know, we, we've had our detractors for sure. Um, our detractors have been loath to identify themselves, so I don't.
It is interesting what they're doing nationally and how well organized they are and it wouldn't surprise me, it wouldn't happen here.
Well, right, because you could have people coming in, you know, with the, you know, making challenge, book challenges or whatever. We have a mechanism for that, so if that were to come up, then, you know, we can obviously direct them towards our handy. Uh, challenge form. That they can be encouraged to fill in and submit for our consideration. So I wanted everybody to be aware that, um, that's, you know, that's the law.
That's why the agenda is posted in a certain amount of time beforehand so that people can look and see and if they want to come, then they have. They know where, where it is and, you know, what time it's at and all that type of thing.
Yeah, so. So that's that.
No, in all the years. How often has someone shown up to or?
I've never, and I've only been here five years, but I've never seen anyone.
In my twelve, one person came and she was new to town and misunderstood that she was coming.
Wait, the library center, the senior center?
She talked to Jackie and, and all of a sudden there she was, it was very awkward. Yeah, it was, uh, it was a little uncomfortable. Come to realize she didn't mean to be this.
Um, so anyway, so that's, that is that, and then the only other thing I wanted to just again underscore that, you know, participation. In the Pavilion Project Campaign, Supporting Events is of paramount importance. Because even though we are sort of coming around to realizing that this is likely not going to be breaking ground this year. Um, or maybe within the calendar year, but not for this upcoming season to be ready. Um, time is of the essence because we can't put it out to bid until we have the money. And until we get it out to bid, we're not going to know how long it's going to take us and really how much the whole thing is going to be costing. Um, well, we're, uh, we're in, we're doing well, I would say, for what we have. For the effort that we've put in, I mean, we've put in a lot of effort, I don't mean to discount that, but for, based on the fact that we've just had the, the. Really now two events, the cornerstone event and then now the mini golf. Um, and with really just CLT board members, you know, trustees and, um, the CLT Development Committee. Reaching out and doing the appeals, the personal appeals to sort of our own lists. We have, I think, a hundred and forty-six odd pledged.
I think we're close to a hundred and fifty.
Close to a hundred and fifty pledged, um, and I think we have like one twenty-ish in the door. Or a hundred in the door, roughly, uh, something like that, there's a, there's a, it's not all, it hasn't all arrived in the mail yet. So, um, just, we're at about. Almost fifty percent trustee participation and, and so, you know, if it's on your to-do list, you know. Anytime now is, is a good time. Um, and when I say participation, it's, I mean, donations are great, but, you know, volunteering for these events. Is really helpful or, you know, coming up with a list of some of your own people who you maybe haven't thought of before. You know, that you could shoot an email to or like say, you know, send out the new renderings, you know, we have them all. Uh, on JPEG and can easily be shared, emailed out to friends and just like keep, keep reaching. And you never know, you know, how someone is going to receive that, so, you know, you never know what, what it might yield.
Do we have, um. Any folks advocating within their organizations like, um.
Like employers, like for matching and stuff like that? Um, I mean, I don't, well, some donors are, are providing matches, yeah, we've had some, some generous matches. Um, that way, um. But I don't know whether people are really going to their employers and asking, you know, people who are involved, you know, on CLT board or whatever. To ask if, I mean, we've talked a little bit about some corporate spats and ships, but we haven't.
We did start a conversation that.
Yeah, about who we might want to approach and who would be interested in. You know, whose mission aligns.
More like, you know, reaching out to, like, I, you know, I always think the local businesses and how they get hammered all the time. By all the various wonderful causes that they can support, but this person was talking, you know, somebody on our committee was talking more about. Asking tablets, asking fidelity, you know, you, you know, they, they want a presence in the community, so. But before we do something like that, we feel like we need to give them a value proposition, how are we going to recognize them, give them exposure if that's what they want? And one thing that was discussed, um, is that oftentimes. Organizations like that want engagement for their employees, so they want like a, a planting day, I'm like, we've got hollies that need to be pruned. We can, you know, like, so we, you know, we, but there really isn't, you know, unless we can come up with a programming thing on the new space. Or something like, some way that we can do that, you know, but again, it was beginning discussion, so.
Thanks again for all the work that you guys have done.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's coming along, but, I mean, many hands make light work, so everybody, you know, whatever you can pitch in. In whatever way works well for your schedule and your life is welcome and encouraged. Um, and I think that's it for me. Oh, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the, um, department heads for their quarterly reports. Yeah, and especially Allison who provided photos. That would be great, um, okay, see you later, Sarah. Um, okay, so that will bring us to the CLT report, so we just sort of gave you the update. Yeah, exactly, but, um, there was some.
And, and I wasn't, you know, keeping on the pavilion theme before just talking about the regular stuff, um. Uh, we did discuss. Whether the CLT board would be comfortable fronting some of the money, like, you know, the fact that we have pledges for money. And it's not all available, would the CLT be willing to front some of that money in order for us to be able to say we have all the money in hand? Now we can go to bid and then, you know, we would have to work again. We did not take a vote, but, um, but the discussion was very positive. And I think, you know, it'll depend on the amount and kind of where we are with the fundraising efforts and everything, but, um, but I think. That something like that is, um. Is a possibility, um, which is great, so, um, so that was the important thing and then, um. See if there was anything else. Uh, I guess they, from the, um, Investment Committee, uh, we did recover somewhat, um. We, we had been, uh, at year end down by one and a half million and we recovered somewhat, um, now we're at one point seven million. Um, a couple of donations before donations, uh, came in and everything, so that was good. Um, the, uh, Advisory Committee is happy with the allocation of equity and fixed income. Um, for the most part, Steve Bobo is now chairing the board, um, Bob Riley remains on the board. But, um, but he's not chairing anymore, so Steve has chaired the last two meetings and.
And Bob is, what I think is wonderful is Bob is asking his secretary to still provide a lot of information, which is really valuable.
Yeah. Um, and that, uh. And that's pretty much.
Great, thank you, um, and for the friends, uh, I missed the friends meeting, but I did sort of get a quick download from Barbara. On Friday, um, they, so, um, you know, I've been talking about the fact that they had sort of a shortfall between what the, the grants. That they were given to the library and what the appeal had brought in, um, so they decided to do basically a second round on the appeal. And they, um, Barbara went back and consulted the. Previous, you know, the old donor list against who had given this year and sort of, you know, who would be amenable to he, hearing a follow-up. And they sent out another round of letters to just people on that list and that yielded another four, thirty-four hundred dollars.
Okay.
So that was a huge success, um, and has basically closed the gap for. Well, to, to bring us to thirty, which was what was grant, the grant amount was for this year. So the hope is to be able to get to thirty-five for next year, um, so they're still grinding away. Um, and the last piece, we're hoping to, to close the gap all the way for this year up to thirty, they're almost up to thirty. Is that we have, um, still. A group of Winslow Homer prints, original woodcut prints. And so we're trying to sell those, they were a gift, I can't remember how it came, was it not a request? But it was like a clearing out of an estate, I think, and somebody gave them to the friends and probably a year or more ago. Um, and anyway, so they were displayed in the library and there was a, there's upcoming a thing about Winslow Homer. A program here, right, so I don't know, maybe they'll, they'll come back out for that, but we have a couple of. We have maybe one interested party, that the Duxbury Art Complex might be interested in acquiring them, which would be great. But if you are interested in seeing them, I have not very good photos of them and they are here in the library upstairs and can be easily. Um, pulled out to, for viewing if anybody's interested in acquiring some Winslow Homer original prints. Just let us know, yeah. Um, they're like between two and five hundred dollars, um. A, a piece, and, I mean, Barbara basically priced them for what they were comparable prints were going for online. Comparable Homer prints, um, so, I mean, I think that they're actually priced pretty reasonably.
Yes.
Um, and they're, they're interesting. Um, and they're, they're interesting, um, so let me know if you're interested.
The fishermen, uh, rowing up a huge wave by himself with a.
But, um, no, I don't think that's one of them. Um, I think it's, uh, there's one that, that's, I mean, titled Boston Common. One is, um, like, uh. Bunker Hill. There, there are five of them, I think, and I have, I, like I said, I have photos, but they're, they're not great, but.
Fan, but he, he likes color.
Oh, no, these are not, yeah, sometimes those prints are like chain colored, yeah, like we have a whole collection of Courier knives that are like, well. Courier knives, and anyway, I digress, so that's the friends and that's basically the whole. And I also wanted to shout out to the friends because we had four of the friends who were on hand for Friday night's event. Helping out Barbara and, um, Sandra Perry, Beth Tarpey and Jen Evans, who also brought her husband Cory. So, extra credit for the friends. So, I think that is it, unless we have any new business, anything, anybody wants to discuss or questions?
Move to adjourn, second.
All in favor? Alright, great.